I hereby call today's meeting to order. This is regular session of the Bloomington City Council, Wednesday, September first, twenty twenty one. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scambolary?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Here.
Amber?
Here.
All right, we're all present accounted for. We'll get started with the agenda summation. First of all, tonight, we have two sets of minutes, I'm sorry, four sets of minutes to be approved. September thirtieth, twenty twenty, October twenty first, twenty twenty, November fourth, twenty twenty, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Then we'll move on to reports. I'll remind everyone that a maximum of twenty minutes is set aside for each part of this section. And that will, in the reports, will be council members, if any, the mayor and the city offices. We will have a report from the Human Rights Commission and an award presentation. Then we move to council committees, and then we'll move to public comment. After that, we'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. And this evening, we do have legislation for second readings and resolutions. The first is Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six, to declare support for the global abolition of nuclear weapons and the Back From The Brink Campaign. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-three, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes and lend the proceeds for the reservation, renovation of affordable housing regarding Crestmont Community, one oh oh two North Summit Street, Bloomington, Indiana. Bloomington Rad Two LP petitioner. The committee of the whole recommendation for that was due past six zero one. Next is ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two, to amend Title Eight of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Thomas Smith House Historic District. The committee of the whole recommendation was due past seven zero zero. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan of the Curry PUD regarding one oh five South Pete Ellis Drive, Curry Urban Properties Petitioner. The committee of the whole recommendation for this ordinance was due past five zero two. We also have legislation for first readings this evening. The ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four, to attend to amend Title Two of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administrative, Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Bloomington Municipal Code Two dot zero four dot four two oh, Motion to Adjourn or Recede to Place Greater Limits on the Duration of Council Meetings That They May End at a Reasonable Hour. After that, we will move to additional public comments. I will remind everyone during that section, a maximum of twenty-five minutes is set aside for this portion. Then we'll move to matters of council schedule, and then we'll move to adjournment. I also like to announce that members of the public may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes. This time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer of numerous people wish to speak. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, it's approval of minutes. Councilman Flaherty?
President, I moved it. The minutes for the special sessions of September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and October twenty first, twenty twenty, as well as the regular sessions from November fourth, twenty twenty, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty, be approved.
Second?
Thank you, it's been properly moved, the second approval of these minutes, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sorry, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that motion to approve passes nine zero. We'll now move down to reports on the agenda, and we'll start off with council member reports. And I will call on you as I see you on the screen. And we'll start with Jim, oh no, that's the first one I saw, we'll start with Sue Scambolary. Councilmembers, Councilmember Scambolary.
Thank you. Just a brief announcement regarding my constituent meeting for September. Ordinarily, these are held on first Saturdays. This year, in order to stay away from the Labor Day holiday weekend, it will be moved to the second Saturday, so it will be on Saturday, September eleventh, at one thirty PM. Still held via Zoom for the foreseeable future, and anyone who is interested is certainly welcome. But many of the discussion items will focus on District Two. If you would like to join my website, suforcitycouncil.com, has a big button on it that says join, all you need to do is click on that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Scambolary, Councilmember Sandberg?
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Isabel, Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. So, Saturday, September eleventh. Well, it's a fateful day in our country's history, for one thing. But I will also be having a constituent meeting that day. My meetings are usually the second Saturday, so now I'm joining Councilmember Scambolary. I'm having a meeting on the second Saturday, since she's skipping the first due to Labor Day. So, my meeting will be at eleven AM, eleven to twelve. And you can find the Zoom link on my Facebook page, Piedmont Smith for City Council, or on the city council website, if you click on my name, then you'll, you'll see my calendar come up and that, that September eleventh meeting will be there. So, I welcome everybody, but of course, especially people from District Five, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. Well, Councilmember Sandberg and I have been sharing our constituent meetings, and ours is the third Saturday of the month. And so our next one will be September eighteenth, at ten AM. And you can find it at Bloomington dot IN dot gov forward slash council, and look at the council's calendar and find the link there. And we welcome anybody. Councilmember Sandberg is a large council member, and I'm District Four. But we would like to hear from anybody who is interested, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Flaherty.
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thanks, I'll just mention my constituent meetings as well. My September one, I do the end of the month, the Fourth Tuesday, usually, so that's Tuesday, September twenty eighth, at five thirty PM. All, all of mine now for the rest of the year can be found on the council website or Facebook. I am changing November and December because of holidays, so those are earlier in the month, thanks.
Thank you for that report, Councilmember Volin.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, and I have no report this evening. We'll move on, down through the agenda on reports. I believe we have a report from the mayor and our city offices, and tonight will be the Human Rights Commission Report and Award Presentation. Is Mr. Ryan Shady present?
We are. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you.
These are all council members, I'm Ryan Shaddy, Chair of the Bloomington Human Rights Commission. And this evening, I not only appear before you as Chair of the BHRC, but also as a one-time friend of tonight's BHRC Award recipient, Cindy Stone. Before the pandemic canceled our meetings and our in-person celebrations, I nominated Cindy for the twenty twenty award. Yes, I said twenty twenty, as in spring of twenty twenty. We certainly have had many events take place between that now, then and now, and many heroes so deserving of this award are out there in our community. Speaking of which, to those listening, please consider who you would like to submit as a nominee for our twenty twenty-two award. However, as I read to you Cindy's nomination letter, which I wrote with esteemed colleagues at first, I'm sure you will see why Cindy herself is deserving of this award. While I wanted to present this to her in front of you all in person, the pandemic that continues to rage in our nation prevents that. Hopefully, we will be able to greet you all in person for what will be the twenty twenty-two awards presentation. Until then, and without further ado, here is why Cindy was selected as the twenty twenty Bloomington Human Rights Award winner. Cindy has distinguished herself as a pioneering leader, passionate educator, tireless volunteer, stellar role model, particularly for young women, and champion of LGBTQ plus rights. As such, she is an integral part of the LGBTQ plus and broader Bloomington community, and a powerful inspiration to all who know her. Some of you even know Cindy pretty well, I hear. Indeed, a treasure to both Bloomington and the IU community and beyond. Cindy entered IU as a first-generation college student, earning her BS in Special Education in nineteen seventy-eight, and later her Master's in Instructional Systems Technology in two thousand. In nineteen eighty-one, she began working full-time for IU as a clerical by day and a graduate student by night. While a university employee, she authored instructional materials, conducted training, and designed a variety of tools for university maintenance staff. During that time, she recognized the need for more university women and staff to gain a stronger voice in university affairs. Ultimately, Cindy's vision and leadership were enhanced by her election to the IU Board of Trustees, serving from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-six. In addition to focusing attention on women's issues, she was the first university staff member and the first openly gay person to serve on the Board of Trustees at a time when LGBTQ plus awareness wasn't where it is today. As trustee, she worked tirelessly on university employees and women's initiatives, childcare, and undergraduate teaching excellence. She has credited with childcare expansion on all campuses of IU, and was instrumental in opening a top-quality childcare center at IU BYU. Cindy's advocacy did not end with the conclusion of her IU trustee service. She was co-founder, a co-founder of the IU LGBTQ plus Alumni Association in nineteen ninety-seven, and served as its first vice president. Its mission has remained the same all of these years, to improve the quality of life for LGBTQ plus students, faculty, staff, and alumni of IU on all of its campuses. That later, before same-sex marriage was possible, she worked actively in support of domestic partnership benefits for IU employees, including serving on a large university task force comprised of deans, faculty, other staff members, and students. A few years before the debate at IU, Cindy's long-term partner had become terminally ill and died of brain cancer. Somehow, Cindy gathered the strength to bring the then current debate to a very personal level by facing the IU trustees and explaining the crucial need for medical benefits for unmarried domestic partners. A personal face close to the university was put on this very public debate. IU's Domestic Partnership Benefits Program was eventually adopted by the Board of Trustees in two thousand and one, and became effective April first, two thousand and two. At the time, only five schools in the Big Ten had adopted such programs. Many believe IU's full move at the time was the catalyst for Purdue to follow suit that following September. This all in turn contributed to the trustees' decision to amend IU's written non-discrimination policy to include sexual orientation that same year in two thousand and two, and then in two thousand and nine, to amend IU's written policy once again to include gender identity. Cindy began an adjunct teaching appointment with the IU Kelly School of Business in nineteen ninety-nine, teaching evening classes. In two thousand and seven, she was hired full-time as a lecturer in Operations and Division Technologies at Kelly. In fact, she helped me when I was in K two oh one as well. So, personal experience there when I was a student. She taught four different undergraduate courses covering two hundred to four hundred level assignments. She retired as senior lecturer from Kelly on May thirty-first, twenty seventeen, after approximately four decades of service to her alumni. And her service at IU, its alumni, and the Bloomington community continues and remains as active as ever. Not to mention, since this was written, Cindy was invited to come out of retirement to teach this semester. So, instead of devoting her retirement full, full-time to creating her beautiful pottery, she is currently only part-time happily retired. Cindy has volunteered for the IU Foundation Academy for Women in a number of capacities, and has remained involved in several women and workplace conferences for IU staff. She has served on the IU Alumni Association Executive Council. Her service has also extended beyond IU to the broader Bloomington community, including women in the arts, Girl Scouts of Tulip Trains, the Underfaith Wintershelter, Community Kitchen, and the Bloomington Thinness Forest. Cindy is one of those people with a huge network of faculty, staff, alumni, and students. And that helps make her all the more effective in working to better the lives of LGBTQ plus people in Bloomington and beyond. She has been recognized with numerous awards, including the IU Division of Student Affairs Diversity and Spirit Award in twenty twelve for mentoring and advising students. She is also one of a very small, select group of IU women leaders who are honored with a special gallery of their portraits in the Indiana Memorial Union. I always feel honored when I happen to walk by that. As noted above, Cindy was one of the strong visionary leaders in the formative years of the IU LGBTQ plus Alumni Association. She is currently serving as its immediate past president, though when this was written, she was president of the Board of Directors, of which I am honored to serve on with her. She brings tireless leadership to building the effectiveness of its board, to planning and promoting its events, and to supporting its fundraising initiatives, which benefits scholarships for IU students. She now brings her guest to the broader, broader Indiana University Alumni Association by sitting on the National Board of Directors. Briefly, the LGBTQ plus Alumni Association is a strong, vibrant group with many activities and programs, but particular attention is given to its scholarship program. Under the scholarship program, two types of scholarships are awarded IU students on all eight campuses. One, academic scholarships, and then two, emergency grants. Academic scholarships are based on academic performance and extracurricular activities. Special consideration is given to involvement in activities raising the awareness of LGD, LGBTQ plus issues. These academic scholarships help cultivate a new generation of leaders, such as Cindy, who are academically strong and also active in promoting diversity, tolerance, and understanding. Emergency grants are also awarded. These are grants granted to IU students who are disowned by their parents when they make the courageous decision to come out to their families, disclosing their sexual orientation or gender identity. As a result of these emergency grants, IU students don't have to decide between living their lives openly and honestly in an IU education. In these tragic situations, the LGBTQ plus Alumni Association steps in and gives the students financial assistance and support. Numerous recipients have explained that they would not, that they would have dropped out of IU had it not been for the LGBTQ plus Alumni Association. These emergency grants kept them in school at IU by other critically important support. Since two thousand and five, a total of one hundred and twenty-nine scholarships, seventy-nine academic and fifty emergency scholarships have been awarded. Nonetheless, Cindy has been great at facilitating this over her leadership and stewardship of the Board of Directors for the LGBTQ plus Alumni Association. Cindy also has been vital in making students feel comfortable in their surroundings, often accompanied to events by her wife, Amy Banker, which is, who's with us as well today. Cindy takes pride in letting those who she teaches know that she is there to listen, talk, and lend a helpful hand to when in need. Cindy and Amy have been an integral part of our LGBTQ plus community for years, and their leadership, strength, and vision have added significant, significantly, and continue to add to its proud legacy at IU and UU. They have helped countless others by example and by deed. Cindy has her distinction and respect for all of the deeds described above, and her integrity has proven to be impeccable. And she is adored and admired by, I would say, a lot of people, all of them in fact. In part because she combines her marvelous personality with a sense of fairness and compassion. Though Cindy has other accomplishments, these are only some of the that Cindy has completed in her life. Cindy is well-deserving of the accolades and continuing to do great things in her retirement, or part-time happily retired. Through her exemplary, exemplary work and advocacy, she has enhanced civility in Bloomington and has improved civil rights and human relations. With pride and enthusiasm and without reservation, I am honored and humbled to award Cynthia Stone the twenty twenty City of Bloomington Human Rights Award. Thank you, Cindy, for your tireless dedication to Bloomington and the other communities for which you serve. Cindy, if you would like to say a few words, you are more than free to do so.
In, in one minute or less, I just want to say thank you to the Human Rights Commission and the city. I'm proud to say I've lived in the greater Bloomington area and the city for nearly fifty years, and this has been my home now for, for all that time. The accomplishments that Ryan mentioned are happened because of so many other people that I've worked alongside of, and I'm most grateful. Primary to that, of course, is, is having, any, behind any good person is, is the, is the wife, the spouse. And so I'm very lucky to have had Amy Bankard along my side for twenty years, and I with her. And we're happy to be Bloomington folks, and we thank you for this recognition. And I stand on the shoulders of so many others, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Shaddy. And on behalf of the council, I'd like to offer our congratulations, kudos to Ms. Stone, Cindy, if I may, on your well-deserved twenty twenty Human Rights Commission Award. Again, congratulations. Now, moving on through the agenda, we will go to public comment. Mr. Lucas, before we get started, we'll determine how many we have, then determine the time that we will allow this evening. But I will remind folks for public comments that this portion will be limited to twenty minutes. You can also, if you have an intent to publicly speak, you can use the raised hand function on Zoom. You can find that function either under the participants button, reactions button, or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile device, a mobile phone, then you ought to be able to access us with the star nine function. Or you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, indicate your desire to publicly speak this evening. So do you see more than the one that I see, Mr. Lucas?
I do not, no.
You do not, okay, you can recognize whoever we have, and we'll go for five minutes, please.
Yes, I see Jim Shelton like to comment and should now be able to do so.
Good evening, Council, Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce, speaking tonight to update you in the public on the CASA program. CASAs, as you know, and I hope the court, the public knows, but in case they don't, are quarter-pointed special advocates. They are volunteers who've been trained to work with children who've been abused or neglected by their parents and are therefore in the court system. Their job is to advocate for these children. We will be having a training next month, October eighteenth through November tenth. It'll be in the evenings, five thirty to eight thirty, Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. The format has not been decided yet, although it's probably leaning towards Zoom with Delta surge. But right now, they're waiting to see how things are when we get a little closer. But those will be the dates. And then after those thirty hours of training, you'd be sworn in by Judge Galvin and Judge Harvey, and then assigned a case, which you would work with one of the CASA professionals. So, I know this scares some people, but you're not responsible for fixing the problem, that's Judge Galvin or Judge Harvey's job. Your job is to help provide them with information so that they can make good decisions. And again, you'd be working that with one of the CASA staff professionals. To become a CASA, a volunteer needs to be twenty-one years or older. We like for them to commit to one or two years of service because that's the length, typical length of a case. They would expect to need to work eight to fifteen hours a month on a case. They need enough daytime flexibility to get to court. Right now, court sessions or all hearings are being done by Zoom. And who knows how long that'll be the case, and, but once they are face-to-face, you need to be able to get there. Other than court, to which you will have some input on the schedule, you can schedule everything else, you're visited with the children, or within teachers, or anybody else can be done on your schedule, whatever works for you. Last year, we helped five hundred and forty-nine children find a way to a permanent home, a permanent situation, and before which they were being subjected to abuse and neglect. Sadly, something we're seeing now, probably as a result of COVID. Kristin Bichette, the director, made a report to the county council other day. Since the county council funds about a third of the budget for CASAs, the rest is fundraised by the board or directors or through grants. That we're receiving more and more cases of children being abused. This is undoubtedly due to the stress of COVID and people had lives being disrupted so much, and the children being home all the time, the parents having their freedom restricted, et cetera. So, we get a quarterly update on statistics, and a month ago, we had eighteen children waiting for a CASA that we had no volunteer to provide. People ask, why do you need a CASA? You've got the Department of Child Services, you've got attorneys. Well, Department of Child Services regs right now say that you, there should not have more than seventeen cases. Although I have had, I've been doing this eight and a half years, I have been with DCS people who've told me they had twenty-five. We will have one or two, so we have much more time to spend with the case, or cases. I've got two, and we have a number of people who've got two. And then we have much less turnover than DCS does. So, it's much more likely that a volunteer will be able to stay with the case through its duration and help be the constant, because there will likely be changes of DCS personnel, and then the people who are providing services turnover even more. So because of the smaller number of children a volunteer will have, we will be able to give the judge, whichever judge it is, much more insight into the status. So I invite people to think about that. For more info, they can go to rocountacasa.org, click on the voluntarily. There's a frequently asked question page where you can learn things. Or you can call eight one two three 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 two two seven two and speak to a staff member. Or you can go on the chamber website and find my email address and email me, I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got and help you decide if this is a situation that would be good for you. The steps would be to apply, then it would be interviewed, and that would help you decide and the staff to decide if this is for you or not, and then you would have the training. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Shelton. Do you see anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't.
Okay, give it just a second. And seeing none, we'll move on into the agenda. Do we have any appointments to boards and or commissions this evening? I see none, and we'll move on with the agenda. I do believe that we have resolutions and second readings ready this evening. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move the resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved, that resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only, will the clerk please read?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on the motion to introduce?
I'm sorry. Yes, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg? Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes mine. Oh, I'll try not to put as many papers and stay on task. Will the clerk now please read?
Resolution 2126, to declare support for the global abolition of nuclear weapons and the back from the brink campaign. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmembers Flaherty, Piedmont, Smith, and Rallo. It recognizes the substantial danger that nuclear weapons pose both locally and globally. Further, it expresses the city of Bloomington's support for the global abolition of nuclear weapons, the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear weapons, and the plan called for in the back from the brink campaign. It confirms that public funds are not directly invested in corporations involved in the design or manufacture of nuclear weapons, and that the city will endeavor not to contract with companies involved in the design or manufacture of nuclear weapons or the delivery systems of nuclear weapons, unless no alternative company is available to perform needed services at a reasonable price and insofar as state law allows. It calls on the United States to take steps to lead a global effort to prevent nuclear war. Note, this resolution was revised after release in the September 1st, 2021 legislative packet, but before introduction at the September 1st, 2021 regular session to clarify that the city will endeavor not to contract with companies involved in the design or manufacture of nuclear weapons or delivery systems of nuclear weapons.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that resolution 21-21, sorry, 21-26 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Would any of the sponsors care to, sorry, thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd like to start the presentation, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to share a PowerPoint if I am able to. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Very good. So on behalf of my colleagues, Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Rallo, I'm here to present resolution 2126 to declare support for the global abolition of nuclear weapons and the back from the brink campaign. So the problem may be obvious to most people, but let's just review. The threat of nuclear war is very high. The, as is stated in the resolution, the sorry, let me open it up here. The doomsday clock, which is something that the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists of atomic scientists have kept track of since 1947, is at 100 seconds to midnight. So that means midnight is the end of life as we know it. And so the scientists have gauged that the threat is very, very close at hand. Secondly, as was affirmed by none other than President Ronald Reagan and Mikhail Gorbachev at the end of the Cold War in the 80s, nuclear war cannot be won and must never be fought. Because there is no such thing as usable nuclear weapons. Any use of nuclear weapons is an environmental and human catastrophe. The problem more specifically right now in the United States is that the predecessor to President Biden had an ambitious program of investing in new nuclear weapon systems. And so far, President Biden has continued this program and this budget. So back from the brink, and many activists throughout the country have pushed for a solution. And putting the brakes on nuclear weapons and eventually committing to disarmament. In 2017, the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons was signed. It has 55 signatories currently. The United States is unfortunately not one of them. The group U.S. Mayors for Peace has also been active on this front. And I believe our own mayor, John Hamilton, is a signatory there. And back from the brink, which is the specific program that this resolution endorses, is a grassroots campaign seeking the abolition of nuclear weapons and fundamental changes in the U.S. nuclear weapons policy. So far, 54 cities and towns, three counties, and four states in the United States have signed on, plus over 100 organizations, seven members of Congress, and over 100 local and state elected leaders, again, including our own mayor, John Hamilton. These are the demands of back from the brink. First of all, to actively pursue a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Number two, renounce the option of using nuclear weapons first. Number three, to end the sole unchecked authority of any U.S. president to launch a nuclear attack. Number four, to take U.S. nuclear weapons off of hair-trigger alert. Right now, they are just moments away from being activated, and that is, costs a lot of money and is quite dangerous. And number five, cancel the plan to replace the entire U.S. nuclear arsenal with enhanced weapons. That was the plan under Donald Trump and continues so far under President Biden. So that's back from the brink that we encouraged, that we commit to as part of this resolution. This is a quote from President Kennedy, which resonates just as much today, six years later. Every man, woman, and child lives under a nuclear sword of Damocles, hanging by the slenderest of threads, capable of being cut at any moment by accident or miscalculation or by madness. The weapons of war must be abolished before they abolish us. So many people may ask, well, what does this have to do with Bloomington? I feel strongly, and I believe the cosponsors do as well, that it's the responsibility of all those elected to representative office to advocate for the safety of their constituents in view of both global and local threats to the safety. And obviously, the use of nuclear weapons is a threat to the safety of residents of Bloomington. Furthermore, grassroots advocacy such as this can lead to actual changes in U.S. policy, as we've seen from past experience, the nuclear freeze movement and the anti-Vietnam movement and other movements in society. And we feel strongly that we must speak out on issues of life or death, even if the ultimate decision is made in Washington. And we'd like to thank you for your consideration. And a special thanks to local activist David Keppel and the members of the Bloomington Peace Action Coalition for bringing this resolution to our attention, helping us work on the wording. And we are open to questions, and I would welcome my cosponsors to also say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Would any of the co-sponsors care to add? Okay, Councilmember Flaherty.
For just briefly, I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's good summary of the resolution and its motivation there. Just first, to thank you to my cosponsors, Bloomington Peace Action Coalition, to David Keppel in particular, and to the staff that worked on this with us. I think the last five years or so, four or five years in particular, have nuclear war as a threat has sort of reemerged in the wake of several factors. Certainly, relations between the U.S. and North Korea with Iran. And actually, just in news this week, North Korea had appeared to have restarted operations on a power plant capable of producing plutonium for nuclear weapons, which had not been observed in several years, according to UN watchdogs. Layer that with some of the global destabilization that happens with a change in climate that we're very much seeing the impacts of in the U.S. and around the world right now. I think this is a very real and serious threat, and the particularly troubling developments in the U.S. in relation to the notion of usable or tactical nuclear weapons and funding programs to look at that is problematic, both under the previous presidential administration and continued funding so far for those programs under the Biden administration. So I think this is a current and pressing issue. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I would appreciate your support of the resolution. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, and thank you to my cosponsors and Stephen Lucas, Heather Lacy, for helping to work on this. And of course, David Keppel's been tireless on this topic for a number of years. And I've gone to a couple of talks actually on it and learned quite a bit in those talks. Just to add to the nice synopsis by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, she quoted Kennedy, and it's alarming that we're still in that situation. But actually, it's worse than we think, because, you know, according to the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, we're actually closer to nuclear war than we were at times during the Cold War. And that's mind-boggling to conceive of, especially since it doesn't seem to be on most people's radar at all. Kennedy was actually approached twice, I believe, by his Joint Chiefs to launch a first strike, and because there was a missile gap with the Soviet Union at the time. And this wasn't known until much later. And of course, we didn't know how perilous the Cuban Missile Crisis was until much later, too. So that bears mentioning. I think that a couple other points, Councilmember Flaherty mentioned potential flashpoints, and you know, they seem to be everywhere now. You know, between NATO and Russia and the Ukraine and Pakistan and India could go to war, and that could cost us the planet in terms of its livability, China, Taiwan. So it's clear that we need to use pressure from civil society, global civil society, to convince world leaders to take action. And that has happened before. That happened in the early 80s. I know that David Keppel was involved in that quite a lot back in the early 80s. And then, and then just to add that, you know, what is really alarming is that these nuclear war may happen by accident. It may be unintentional. It may simply be a mistake. And there's a long line of evidence, of historical evidence pointing toward near misses, where we were just literally seconds away from the abyss. And then we can't discount those people in power, as Kennedy referred to, the madness of people in power that could take us to some kind of breakmanship using nuclear weapons in terms of, you know, trying to gain some sort of political geopolitical advantage, or thinking that a limited nuclear war is possible, or heaven forbid that a first strike might be the best option, or it should even be considered. So as long as there's a positive probability, we need to work against this. And the probability now is much higher than at any time. And so I think that this is a good step for us, Mayor Hamilton, the council, and I hope that other cities join us. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo, and thank you sponsors for your presentation. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that David Bullifard of the Bloomington Peace Action Coalition had a longer PowerPoint presentation that we didn't have time for this evening, but it has been emailed to council members and will also be added to the packet on the council website. There was a misunderstanding, that's why I didn't go out earlier, but look for that. And I wonder if we have any time left, if we could allow David Keppel to say a few words or as part of the presentation, or should he wait for the public comment?
I think we'll move the public comments right after this, and it probably would be proper there if there's no objections. Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have any questions from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public for a public comment. Again, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can find it at the participants button, reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of the Zoom. If you're on a mobile phone, you should be able to reach us with star nine. And otherwise, you may send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, indicating your desire to speak. Okay, I see two, Mr. Lucas, so I think five minutes is appropriate. Who do we have, sir?
Yes, and first up is David Keppel.
Members of the council, my name is David Keppel. I am spokesperson of Bloomington Peace Action Coalition. I would like to thank you for speaking out on this existential threat to life on Earth. We live in a time of climate chaos and political turbulence that is much too dangerous for hair-triggering nuclear weapons. If a crisis arises and leaders miscalculate, we could have an homicidal nuclear war. As Beatrice Finn of the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons says, "The choice is the end of nuclear weapons or the end of us." Your resolution wisely endorses the Back From the Brink platform, which is a set of common sense steps to reduce nuclear risk. The United States must pledge never to use nuclear weapons first. As Indiana's late Senator Richard Lugar warned a few years ago, "It is a deadly illusion to think we could start a nuclear war and somehow keep it limited." Yet today, the U.S. is embarking on a $1.7 trillion enhancement of our nuclear arsenal with destabilizing first-strike nuclear weapons. This is misguided and very dangerous. By speaking out, Bloomington is joining cities across the nation such as Baltimore, Des Moines, Los Angeles, Philadelphia, Tucson, and Washington, D.C. in demanding that our elected representatives listen to reason and reuse, then eliminate this mortal threat to ourselves and future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keppel. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is the screen name Marge's iPhone.
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can hear you fine. Can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Margaret Steiner, Marge. I am a resident of Bloomington and a folklorist and a peace activist. And I want to underscore what Ms. Piedmont Smith said at the very beginning of this session, that the the greatest existential threat that we face is the use of nuclear weapons, which would end life on Earth. And since the primary duty of any elected official, it would be to under, would be to work to guarantee the safety of its constituents, it is absolutely fitting and proper that the city council put its stamp of approval and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I believe Margaret Squires would like to comment and should now be able to unmute.
Are you there, Ms. Squires?
There we go. I think I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine. You have five minutes.
All right. Well, I want to first thank the members of the council for considering this vital issue. I'm Margaret Squires, and I've lived in Bloomington off and on since 1971. And I love this town. And I love this town. My husband Mike assures me that with a major university at its heart, Bloomington is on a direct nuclear targeting list. And I'm sort of glad of that, because if there were a nuclear war, I'd rather be vaporized in an instant than grieve for weeks while wasting away from radiation sickness and waiting to see if the experts are right about the end of sentient life on Earth. I think it's far better to help prevent nuclear catastrophe, which this resolution would help do. And while we're at it, it will help save over a trillion dollars of taxpayer money rather than pay out taxpayer money to make us less safe by investing in new destabilizing weapons. So tonight, by embracing this resolution, Bloomington has the opportunity to become one of the many tugboats needed to nudge the course of nuclear policy in a better direction. I really hope we can do this, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, seeing none, we'll return to council for any final comments on Resolution 21-26. Councilmember Volan.
I thank the sponsors for bringing this forward, and I plan to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other final comments? Okay, seeing none, I will add, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rallo.
Something I forgot to add, but I read an article recently last month, and it was in the Washington Post, and it was titled, it's on our nuclear posture, and it was entitled, "The U.S. Says It Can Answer Cyber Attacks With Nuclear Weapons: That's Lunacy." And it just illustrates again the extreme danger that we're in, because cyber attacks we know happen, and/or they could be misinterpreted. Things could happen that are misinterpreted as cyber attacks, or they could be initiated by hackers. And if we're going to include, in terms of our menu of responses, nuclear war, it just illustrates just how, you know, close we are. So I take this very seriously. And again, I thank the sponsors and I hope that sanity prevails. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Mayor Hamilton for signing the Mayor's for Peace Declaration as well as Back From the Brink. So he's been very proactive in stating his support for the abolition of nuclear weapons, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other final comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll add a few. I also would like to thank the mayor for participating. And not only the Mayor's for Pete's opportunity to sign, but also supporting Back From the Brink grassroots approach. I think I got that correctly. My last thing is, during the presentation by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, there was a section on her PowerPoint that said, "Why Bloomington." And in addition to thanking the sponsors for bringing this resolution tonight, I believe I heard that it was brought because the sponsors felt strongly about this resolution. And I couldn't agree more. I would just like to add that I believe the other members of this council feel just as strongly or very strongly for this resolution, and I think and hope that the vote will reflect that strong support as well. So if we have no further final comments, are we ready for the question? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Let me try that again. Councilmember Rosenberger?
Yeah.
Gamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My resolution is adopted 9-0. And I will also say, and the sponsors can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe a copy of this resolution will be sent to our state legislatures, our governor, maybe, our federal legislature, and the Office of the President of the United States. And please correct me if I misstated any of that. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
All right. Thank you for mentioning that, President Sims. It's only to our federal delegation, the president, the senators, and the congressmen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to send it to as many as we can. But thank you for correcting me. I really appreciate that. Okay, moving on. I do believe we have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that Ordinance 21-33 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Rosenbarker?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that Resolution 21-33 be introduced and read by the clerk by the title, by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, Ordinance 2133, Final Approval to Issue Economic Development Revenue Notes and Lend the Proceeds for the Renovation of Affordable Housing Regarding Crestmont Community 1002 North Summit Street, Bloomington, Indiana. Synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Bloomington to issue economic development revenue notes pursuant to Indiana Code, Chapter 36.7, 11.9, and 36.712, in an amount not to exceed an aggregate principal amount of $30 million. The city would lend the proceeds from the economic development revenue notes to Bloomington Rad to LP and Indiana Limited Partnership and its affiliated partners or limited liability company for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and renovation of the affordable housing development known as the Crestmont Community at 1007 Summit Street in Bloomington. Bloomington Rad to LP and its partners would fully indemnify the city and take full responsibility for payment of the notes. The city would not bear liability, ongoing obligation, or costs related to the notes. The city would act only as a conduit, allowing the borrower to access capital at a tax-exempt rate and receive equity for the project in the form of tax credits. The renovations to the community would focus on addressing code requirements, handicapped accessibility, modernizing the units, and energy efficiency. You do pass recommendation as 601.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
President, I move that Ordinance 21-33 be adopted.
Second?
Thank you very much. I do believe that either Mr. Allen or Ms. Scobie is here to present this evening.
Evening, councilmembers. To spare you a lengthy presentation that we've already given you, because I know you haven't had anything going on recently, I just want to highlight some of the procedural mechanisms for how we got here. We've done similar projects like this in the past to renovate Reverend Butler and Walnut Woods Apartments. This is for the Crestmont Community, as you've heard. The common council, this common council passed an inducement resolution for this bond issue in Resolution 2105, passed on February 3rd of this year. As required by statute and by this council, the Economic Development Commission considered this issuance and held a public hearing for community feedback. The EDC unanimously recommended passage of this ordinance in EDC Resolution 2105, and there were no public comments or objections to the issue during the public hearing. As noted, joining me today is Amber Scobie of the Bloomington Housing Authority and Bloomington Rad to LP's council, Chris Cashman. And we're happy to answer any questions you have or provide any updates you're looking for. Thank you.
I'm sorry, unmute myself. Before we go forward, Ms. Scobie or Mr. Cashman, would you like to add anything to that presentation?
Sure, and thank you to the council for including us on the agenda this evening. My name is Chris Cashman. I'm an attorney with Ice Miller, and we're serving as bond counsel for this particular project. I think Larry and Clerk Bolden summarized a lot of the high points very well. And I know that you guys have already received our PowerPoint presentation regarding this project, so we'll forego that this evening to perhaps allow Amber a few additional minutes to address some of the more specific topics that the Committee of the Whole...
You're muted, Mr. Cashman.
Lost. Can you read? Lost him, Mr. Cashman.
All right, Mr. Lucas, we've lost him. Okay, and I can't seem to get his attention.
I'm not sure. We're frozen on his screen. I don't know if Ms. Scobie or Mr. Allen wanted to finish his thought.
Yeah, I think we'll move to Ms. Scobie, if that's proper. Are you back with us, Mr. Cashman? No, go ahead, Ms. Scobie, if you're ready.
Sure. I am Amber Scobie, the executive director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. A couple of weeks ago, during the Committee of the Whole, there was a lot of discussion around some of the utilities and energy efficiency with this project and the conversion. After we spoke during that meeting, I did go back and look at some details of the scope of work on the project. And I just did want to update you all that there are solar panels planned to be installed on 35 of the buildings that have south-facing roofs. So that's 35 buildings out of 55 buildings total in Crestmont. So that will be a huge energy savings for electricity. And yes, also something I overlooked in the scope of work that could have been important to our conversation two weeks ago and did want to bring that to your attention in case anyone was still having questions about some of the utility consumption, energy efficiency. Most important, because the project pays the utilities, they're not in the tenant's name. We, at the Housing Authority, feel that's important to promote housing stability as if a tenant does fall behind on a utility bill that's in their name, it could be cause for eviction. And of course, we don't want that to happen in our community. So this was our strategy for Crestmont and beyond the solar panels, of course, installing more energy-efficient heating and cooling systems and on-demand water heaters, which are an upgrade from what's currently existing in Crestmont. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you for that addition, Ms. Scobie. We'll now move to council for any questions. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, and we will move to the public for any public comment. I will remind the public again that you can use the raise hand function on Zoom, and you can find that that function under the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons at the bottom of Zoom. If you're on a mobile phone, you ought to be able to reach us using star nine, or you can send a note to our meeting host indicating your desire to publicly speak, and you can send that via chat. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers that you see?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. Seeing none, we will now move to council for final comments on Ordinance 21-33 and/or questions if we have any. Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, councilmembers, councilmembers.
I just wanted to thank, I just wanted...
I apologize. Just as we were closing public comments, I did have a comment come in over chat. I apologize. This comment is from screen in B square, I believe Dave Askins, a question which he understands the council is not under an obligation to get answered. Are the security cameras that have been installed recently a part of the RAD project? And that is the comment. And I don't have any additional public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you were next. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody involved in the project. It's a really good project, and I'm very proud that Bloomington's doing this. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
I will just take up the question if Ms. Scobie would care to answer.
Yes, so the question about the security cameras, if that's part of this RAD project, it is not. It was actually funded by a safety and security grant that the Housing Authority applied to the U.S. Department, yes, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We got that grants last year, I believe, in order to fund the security camera installation and also some street lighting in Crestmont. So that's totally separate from this project.
Thank you, Ms. Scobie. Anything further, Councilmember Sandberg? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or final comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to say, also extend my thanks for Ms. Scobie and everyone involved in this project. It's overdue to have these units renovated, and it's exciting that we're going to have solar panels on the majority of the buildings, as well as the on-demand water heaters and the increased energy efficiency in the appliances. So that's great news and good luck moving forward.
Thank you very much. Any final comments? Seeing none, I will add to Ms. Scobie and her board at the Bloomington Housing Authority. Thank you for the work that we're doing. This is an example of collaboration on a couple of different fronts, and that's something I think the leadership at Bloomington Housing Authority has been very good at and diligent with. I think thanks goes to our city administration and all the others that you work with. I am particularly grateful, for lack of a better word, that we were able to use some of the Bloomington citizens through the Section 3 Avenue, as well as able to help a lot of the women and minority-owned businesses in this project. I think that's significant for this community. Kind of reminds me of the rising tide raises all ships and boats, so I really truly appreciate that. Okay, any other final comments? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 21-33? You're muted.
Well, well, I...
Been there, done that, yes.
Yeah. I'll try that again. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenberger?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That ordinance is adopted 9-0. Thank you to the presenters again. I do believe we have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
I move that Ordinance 21-32 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes. And that motion passes. Looking on my screen. It's been moved in second ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-two to amend Title Eight of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding the Thomas Smith House Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter eight point two zero of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts in order to designate the Thomas Smith House parcel number fifty-three oh eight oh three four zero 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 eight point zero zero one dash oh oh nine located at thirteen twenty-six South Pickwick Place, City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, as a historic district. Built in eighteen twenty-eight, the Thomas Smith House is one of the earliest examples of the I-house form in Bloomington. The home is one of only one of a handful of covenanter brick farmhouse houses from the early settlement period of Bloomington that still stand and it's still and it maintains a high level of historic integrity due to the unaltered state of the original portion of the house. The house is associated with Thomas Smith, a member of the early covenanter church in Bloomington, a philanthropist and a purported conductor on the Underground Railroad. Your due pass recommendation is seven zero zero.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
And move that ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I do believe we have missed Cologne Baragna and Director Zodi to present. I see Director Zodi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council members and Madam Clerk. Don't much more to say than than the synopsis that was read for the ordinance we presented to you a couple of weeks ago during during Committee of the Whole and tonight we're happy to take questions on the consideration of this important historical property in Bloomington. So and I do want to mention, Mr. President, the glory call on Brania is on. She's our Historic Preservation Partner and Manager and really has led the effort on shepherding this through and she's available to answer questions, as is myself.
Thank you very much. And with Miss Cologne Baragna, if I pronounce that correctly, have anything to add on this presentation?
Um, not in the moment unless anybody has questions.
Okay, thank you very, very much. We will now move to council for any questions that you may have on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two. Okay, seeing none. We'll now go to the public for public comments on this ordinance. Are you looking, Mr. Lucas? I will remind folks again that you can use the raised hand function on Zoom either through the participants or the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile phone, you can get to us by star nine, or you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Do we have many takers, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any, no.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move back to council for any other questions or final comments on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none, I would make a final comment. I am very happy at many times we deal with historic preservation projects. It has to do with with the building and the structure itself and it's whether it contributes or not and these sorts of things. But I think one of the things that's important in historic preservation is the social historical value. In this particular case, how this house, as it was reported in research, was one of the stops on the Underground Railroad, which I think had some pretty strong historical significance to the structure along with its value of being built in first place. So looking across the sea, any other council members have any comments? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two is adopted nine zero. Okay, moving on to the agenda, I do believe we have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes and it's been moved in second that ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-one to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan of the Curry PUD regarding one oh five South Pete Ellis Drive, Curry Urban Properties Petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance twenty-one thirty-one amends the district ordinance and preliminary plan for the Curry PUD to allow for three-bedroom units and some design changes to the building, among other changes, while still allowing the construction of one mixed-use building. Your due pass recommendation is five zero two.
Thank you very much. I get my place here. Councilmember Flaherty?
As I move that ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and adopted. We have present presenting this evening. I see Miss Scanlon on the screen.
Yes, good evening.
And Mr. Jason?
Jason?
Jason.
Jason, thank you.
Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager, Planning and Transportation Department. I'm just going to briefly go through this petition as we discussed it in some detail a couple of weeks ago. The property is located at the northwest corner of Pete Ellis and Longview. It is currently zone plan unit development. That petition was filed in twenty nineteen and approved in twenty twenty and the petitioners are coming back to request an amendment to that plan unit development. Previously, the PUD allowed only studios, one bedrooms and two-bedroom apartments. They'd like to add the possibility for three-bedroom units here as well with a cap that would be below the thirty-three percent that our current UDO describes as student housing. And they would like to change the design of the building. Those are the two large changes. There are also a couple of other small development standard changes such as allowing the stair tower on the northeast corner to be set back ten feet from the northern property line instead of fifteen, which is still three feet greater than the underlying than the commercial limited zoning district that was chosen for development standards for this PUD when it was approved. The building would increase in height by about two and a third feet from fifty-seven feet as their maximum to fifty-nine four. We've been told that that is a function of once the architectural drawings were done in more detail. We do know that there are some slope changes on this property and that that was more in line with the actual need for height. And they are projecting thirty dwelling units per acre, which was always their maximum, but they had been projecting closer to twenty-nine. So just to recap, this is the old layout, which we saw in twenty twenty with the parking structure in the middle of the building and units flanking on each side. And this is the current proposal. So the parking structure to be completely wrapped by units with a larger open space inside the building on the western portion. So again, the conceptual elevation along Pete Ellis, not changing much, still some differentiation with floors to give some more visual interest. These were the previous slides, excuse me, previous renderings that were submitted with the last petition. And these are the new elevations. Obviously, the biggest change is that there was a reasonable condition put on by this body that the exposed parking, you can see here on the on the lower picture, be covered by a living wall. And that is now not visible from the road. And so Plan Commission included a a condition of approval that the area immediately west of the vehicular entrance, you can see in the top picture, will still have to have some sort of visual interest to it, even though it will be reassessed and obviously a lot smaller than the area under the last design. So that is this area here, something will need to be go on that wall. So again, this is at the very corner of the comprehensive plan designated area around the new hospital. The petition tonight, the department and Plan Commission agreed that the amendments don't change the intent of this PUD and it still offers architectural design unique to this area, range of benefits and features for tenants and that the is still adding to obviously our diverse housing need. The Affordable and Workforce Housing Agreement that was derived during the last process is will still be in effect. That is part of this petition as well. And they, so obviously we will be getting housing stock as well as workforce units. So the Plan Commission recommended approval with fourteen petitions. These were similar conditions to the first approval along with the addition of the reasonable conditions that were put on by this body last time. One notable change that we discussed a couple of weeks ago is that the previous petition required that a traffic study be submitted at final plan approval, but that was that was the end of the requirement. And Plan Commission changed that so that if a traffic study does indicate that improvements are warranted, that those improvements shall be installed at the responsibility for both or financial design and installation responsibility of the petitioner unless they come to some other agreement with the City of Bloomington at that time. There was a second former reasonable condition that has been listed as a condition of approval, number eleven here, and I believe that you received two reasonable conditions today that address a potential change to that as well. This, the change is needed because the wording of the original is very specific to the parking structure and the design of the parking structure from the twenty nineteen twenty twenty petition was covered because there were units on top of the parking structure, but now it is uncovered. It's parking on the fourth floor as well. So the zoning commitment for cool or vegetated roof didn't quite make sense anymore. The petitioners proposed to possibly have that parking area on the fourth floor be painted in such a way or that the material on it be in such a way that would meet some of the UDO requirements, but you will see that two other reasonable conditions were submitted by one of the council members. So the Plan Commission recommended approval based on these, based on the report and subject to the conditions I listed. Now I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Scanlon. I think now we'll go to council members for any questions on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one. Councilmember Rallo?
Ms. Scanlon, if traffic improvements are found warranted, what would they consist of? Or what are we, what are we talking about in terms of parking improvements?
So I believe that the main outcome often of a traffic study is whether or not a traffic light is warranted at the intersection of Longview and Pete Ellis. And so based on the discussions in at the twenty twenty hearings and what I know now, that would be the main change that could be possible at that location.
Is the entrance and exit on Pete Ellis of the parking garage?
No, the entrance and exit, there's one vehicular entrance exit and it's on Longview.
Oh. Okay. And and so the but the traffic light could be on, where would that likely be installed?
At that intersection of Pete Ellis and Longview.
I see. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon, can you just explain a little bit, talk about this, I guess, condition number eleven, and then talk about the SRI requirements and had a whole citation. We explain what that is, if you will.
Sure. And yes, so the it's a part of the code requirement that is related to cool and vegetated roofs. And basically, it has to do, I believe, so Mr. Flaherty can actually correct me if I'm wrong, but it has to do with the reflectivity of the material having to do with reducing heat island effect and, you know, that traditionally, for example, if you look at aerials just in town, traditionally, most rooftops are dark. And then there's been a movement in the past, I don't know, decade or longer of white roofing and to offset some of that heat effect and also, I believe, cool the building slightly as well. So those are accepted numbers that we got. I believe that they are comparable to LEED standards related to roofing materials to help basically offset the heat island effect in a way that a vegetated roof might as well.
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, has there been any change to the workforce housing agreement that the petitioner has had entered into?
It will be the same agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Before we would go to public comment, I would like to move an amendment, so I could do that this time. In particular, not an amendment, I'm sorry, reasonable condition. In particular, I would like to introduce reasonable condition zero one B for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second for reasonable condition oh one B?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Will you care to present?
Yes, of course. And I believe Mr. Lucas is going to display a slightly updated version than what was in the packet. The reason it's number zero one B is because we had two alternatives prepared, zero one A and zero one B, depending on some some information that was still forthcoming late in the day. I believe this will work for the petitioner, but I'd like to confirm that. So as as was mentioned in Ms. Scanlon's presentation, the previous reasonable condition number four imposed by this body last year is sort of no longer relevant based on the design changes that applied to the roof of a garage. The current design is to have an open roof deck. Sorry, open deck of the top floor of the of the garage, which is now wrapped. The UDO contemplates two sustainable development incentives or standards in relation to roofs. One is for the green or cool roof, which is actually reflected in this reasonable condition. The other has to do with parking surfaces, surfaces. One is for the green or cool roof, uh, which is actually reflected in this reasonable condition. The other has to do with parking services, surfaces. Um, I believe the petitioners are willing to meet this one, and I and I thought that was the better way to go and and simpler and and better in line with their design. Uh, so the reasonable condition would require a commitment to install a cooler vegetated roof covering at least seventy percent of the total roof surface in line with the UDO section twenty point oh four point one ten D two A Roman four. Um, and I believe we got confirmation earlier today that the non-garage portion of the building footprint slightly exceeds seventy percent. So that if the roof of the units for the building and not the garage portion were to meet the standards of the UDO, I believe it's an initial SRI value of eighty two for low slope groups, uh, then they would be in line with that provision from the UDO. And uh, what's noted below the the text here or below the condition is that the reasonable condition supersedes reasonable condition number four uh, from the council adopted in February fifth, twenty twenty, it would also supersede the condition number eleven that was submitted by the Plan Commission. So this would now be the controlling guideline with regard to cool roof. So I would like to hear from the from the petitioner certainly. Confirmation, I suppose, that 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 is what they intend to meet in terms of the the SRI value and and the percent of roof space that will meet that, as well as any feedback from staff. I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Council member Flaherty. Um, do we have anything back from staff or petitioner? On this reasonable condition oh one B.
Jason, uh, Mr. Jason, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, Tom.
He's muted, yes.
Of course. Sorry about that. Uh, thanks, council for hearing our petition today. And thank you, Councilor Flaherty, for summarizing the reasonable condition one B. We are okay with that reasonable condition. Um, as you noted, there's seventy one percent of uh, our roof is will already be the TPO, um, which three major manufacturers are all that we would talk to, all meet or exceed that uh, minimum SRI standard. So we're all good with that.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you. Um, anything else, Council member Flaherty, before we?
Not for me, unless there are questions, sir.
No, thank you. We're now go to council for any questions of Council member Flaherty on reasonable condition oh one B. Seeing none, we will go to the public for any public comment on reasonable conditions oh one B. Uh, which is part of ordinance thirty one dash twenty one dash thirty one. See anyone, Mr. Lucas? Okay.
Do not, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Neither do I. We'll return back to council uh, for any other questions or final comment on reasonable condition oh one B. Council member Flaherty.
Uh, yeah, just a brief thank you to petitioners for their willingness to work with us on meeting this condition um, in up in the updated design. Um, it actually is, I I think, pretty important in the context of urban infill. Um, as we lose, uh, what is green space here, trying to mitigate the urban heat island effect uh, in denser urban environments. Uh, so hopefully this is something we can continue to uh, see with developments and and perhaps um, in the industry as well, uh, just shifting this as a new norm. So I appreciate that this is being done here. I just want to say thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other final comments from council? Council member Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, I just want to thank my colleague, Council member Flaherty, for working on this reasonable condition. Um, I think it carries forward the general concern that we had initially that brought forward reasonable condition four back in February of twenty twenty um, to have uh, some sustainable development incentives employed. Uh, at that time, we're talking about the the uh, the roof over the parking garage, but at this point, I think it makes the most sense to talk about the roof in general, since part of the the parking structure will not be covered. So so thank you to staff and Council member Flaherty for the amendment or the reasonable condition.
Thank you. Any other final comments on this reasonable condition oh one B? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll on reasonable condition oh one B as part of ordinance twenty one dash thirty one?
Yes, Council member Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Follin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reasonable condition oh one B, uh, part of ordinance twenty one dash thirty one. Uh, it's adopted nine zero. Um, we will now go to questions, I'm sorry. Uh, public comment on ordinance twenty one dash thirty one as it contains reasonable condition oh one B. Um, I hope I pronounced that correctly. I will remind those in the public that you can uh, indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function on Zoom. Um, you can get there by using the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons um, at the bottom of Zoom. Or if you were trying to reach us on your mobile phone, use star nine. And lastly, you can send a note to our meeting post via the chat function on Zoom to indicate your desire to have a public comment.
Not, oh, yes, I do see a request from Steve Akers. Should now be able to comment.
Hello, council members and staff. It's Steve Akers at, uh, with the Park Ridge neighborhood. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Pete Mon Smith's comment about the workforce housing agreement that that remains the same. That's important. That's a a good, a good item that's within this this petition that, uh, we didn't get over in the uh, the Latimer Woods former Kmart spot. So at least we got it here. So that's excellent. Uh, one thing I'd like to, uh, maybe I guess just asking that maybe some specificity about the traffic study. Uh, I know that if if right now the wording is kind of if there is a traffic issue that a traffic light, if it's warranted, that it would be it would either be funded by the petitioner or with some sort of agreement with the city. So I guess we need, I I'd like to see maybe some teeth in that and then what that looks like. What what's what's going to be the tipping point for whether or not a light is there or not? What are the numbers involved and things like that? Cause I I really see that if if that does become a problem, uh, the neighborhoods around this area are going to be really, really concerned about it. So just just a comment there. And also appreciate, uh, looking at the heat island effect with the garage roof. I I'm kind of, I'm disappointed that we didn't get any solar there, because that was what was originally what we talked about to try and offset, uh, the the carbon footprint of this of this facility. Uh, looking at, you know, whether whether there was some uh, solar array on that building to power the uh, the charging unit set are going to be planned for the inside the garage. Uh, so it's okay, you know, if that's not going to happen, I guess we it was going to be part of the plan at one time back in the day, a couple of years ago. But uh, at least we are concerned about he like heat islands. So that's great. Uh, I guess that's it. That's all the comments that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Akers. Do we have anyone else?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, seeing none, we'll return to council for any other questions or final comments on ordinance twenty one dash thirty one as a mint, I'm sorry. With the addition of reasonable condition oh one B, uh, council member Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask staff, um, I I do remember the conversation about solar panels to at least uh, power the the lights, the external lights on the property or the parking garage lights. I thought that that was, uh, initially in in what we approved in February of twenty twenty. Uh, is that still part of, am I remembering that correctly? And is that still part of the project?
Oh, I'm not sure. Let me double check. Um, I know that in, um, Mr. Flaherty's original reasonable condition for in the old petition, uh, the roofing over the parking could be reduced. The percentages could be reduced if solar was put in in place of that. Um, let me, I will have to check that. I don't recall that that was a requirement. And we carried forward all conditions and reasonable conditions. So it's not in the current. Um, unless that was something that the petitioner had put in their petitioner statement, which again, they used the same document and redlined it. So I don't believe that that was something that um, was put in separately, only something that was discussed and then room was left in um, in the reasonable condition for in case they were able to do that, is my reference.
Well, I um, I pulled up the legislation and it it just has a a brief summary of the reasonable conditions. And reasonable condition six, uh, from Council member Flaherty says solar panels, EV charging stations designed for retrofitting the parking garage, adopted nine zero. So it's just an abbreviated.
Sorry, yes. So that is listed, so it was in there. Um, and then, um, in the current petition under recommendations, um, the, uh, let me share screen here. The conditions that came forward from Plan Commission, it's listed under, um, number thirteen. So the developer shall, it is still there. So since because it was a reasonable condition, previously we added it as a condition of this petition. Um, the developer shall record a written zoning commitment to installing so solar photovoltaic panels for with a minimum power capacity of fifty kilowatts. Uh, and then I was forgetting that that was part of this, uh, condition that also requires, um, at least ten EV charging stations. Um, so that is still part of this petition, excuse me.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Council member Rallo.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Scanlon. Um, so how does the traffic study come about again and and what would determine the trigger for uh, the need for a traffic light?
Sure. So, um, the traffic study will be looking at the specific use. So, um, what an engineering firm for the petitioner, uh, will, um, put together typical, uh, trips of traffic per day that should be generated by this use based on density and uses on the site. Um, and then they basically model that in the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, and then there are thresholds for, uh, whether or not we as the city think that, uh, I believe it's based on like the MUTCD, but whether or not, um, this use will trigger uh, the need for slot traffic to be further regulated with a light at this intersection. So when we discussed it a little bit last time in a plan commission, um, there have been other traffic, there has been another traffic study done and related to the upgrades happening at the hospital in this area. Um, and so our engineering staff will be able to aggregate that information. The traffic that is expected to be generated by that use plus the traffic that is expected to be generated by this use uh, to determine whether or not they think, um, a full light, uh, is required. Um, and basically, we will actually ask their traffic consultants to do that. That's pretty typical um, in studies of this type, and especially with more than one facility in the area. And but our engineers will have to sign off on that.
So they do the modeling and but can we, uh, actually do the traffic counts to see?
Yes.
To validate that this is.
Traffic counts could would be could be included as well. Um, the traffic study is typically done before the use scope. I mean, the way that it's listed in this particular petition, uh, they have to have it done at an early stage. So it will be before the building is built uh, so that we will know if it is obvious that something needs to be done, then they will have to, uh, do that early in the process instead of waiting until, uh, an issue occurs.
So will we have some baseline data? Are we going to do counts before?
Yes. And I don't know, this is kind of a weird thing, because when this came forward last time, we had a different traffic engineer, uh, for the city. But I don't know if you recall, uh, the previous engineer seemed very fairly confident based on his experience of this type of use going in. I don't know if you'll recall, he came from another college town, similar types of construction, that he, uh, part of the reason why the reasonable condition wasn't as strong last time was that he was fairly confident that it would probably not generate the types of numbers that would warrant a traffic light. Um, but, uh, under, uh, engineer, Mr. Seabor, who is here now, uh, he does want to see the number, he is more, um, interested in seeing the numbers to verify that we know that it's not going to have a negative effect, um, on those streets around and that we change the reasonable condition in such a way that it will be the responsibility of the developer were that to be shown necessary.
Okay, and and the traffic light would include things like, uh, a crosswalk and the
Yes.
and signalization for pedestrians and all of that, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. And and thanks to Mr. Akers for, uh, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Council member Flaherty.
Yes, following up on the same question, I believe, Ms. Scanlon, that you mentioned that the developer would be responsible for for the cost of a traffic light unless some alternative arrangement was agreed to with the city. Is that right?
That's correct.
Um, can can you tell me anymore about what that might look like or how that's looked in other situations? I do have at least some concern about the equity of the notion of making, uh, this petitioner, uh, solely responsible for traffic for a whole area, uh, simply because they are the arrival that happened to exceed a certain threshold. Generally speaking, it's it's sprawl development that causes traffic much more than dense infill like this. Um, so from a fairness perspective, I I I have a little bit of a hard time wrapping my head around making one party solely responsible for for an improvement like that. Does does that factor into your analysis at all?
I think, um, that the reason, the reason we left that, the reason we added that, uh, to the condition allowing Steve Bloomington to make an agreement if if we feel that's appropriate, does a little bit address your concern or is a little bit related to your concern that, yes, you know, people have pointed out, what about the hospital? Um, you know, are they going to be generating more traffic along, um, Pete Ellis than this project ever will? You know, if this project doesn't get off the ground for two years and it's already, uh, you know, obvious that something needs to happen here that the city would otherwise be doing, then we felt we wanted to include that um, so that there could be discussion about, does there need to be some sort of split? Or, uh, it could be, you know, as opposed to, it could be that maybe it makes more sense for it to be, you know, part of a larger city project that comes forward where the petitioner, uh, isn't doing, you know, hiring a contractor for the labor portion or something. We wanted to leave it open ended, um, so that, yes, it is ultimately their responsibility. While I understand your concern about kind of where you're coming in, uh, during the process, and now all of a sudden, this is just your responsibility. Um, we, uh, it is kind of the tipping point, and so the person at the tipping point kind of gets that, um, gets gets that ticket typically. Uh, but but we do understand that there are other things going on in this in this part of town, and that it may be appropriate uh, for the city to bear some, uh, financial responsibility here as well. And that's the kind of thing that when the engineering department does the analysis and then, uh, depending on when it comes through, you know, looking through budgets and working with you all, you know, trying to decide if that if that's something, uh, that we need to be a part of or have that entirely be, uh, related to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Smith.
I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Rallo and Mr. Flaherty for asking those questions, um, because that's where I was going with, uh, uh, the question about the traffic. And, uh, I live in. the question about the traffic. And I live in that area and I can just absolutely predict that it's going to need a traffic light. With the hospital in full, in full bloom and the development there, and the development at Kmart, there's no doubt it's going to need a traffic light. So I would, I would advise the city and and the developer to be thinking about how how to come to some agreement on that. It's going to be very busy. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Do we have any other questions or final comments from council? Okay, and this is on ordinance twenty one dash thirty one with the addition of reasonable condition oh one B, Councilmember Flaherty.
Um, yeah, just a few comments on some some things that were brought up. I think when when looking at a development like this and this type of infill, which is in a, you know, transit friendly, fairly walkable bike area, it's on a greenway. I I think, keeping in mind that we have two hundred and thirty three units, three hundred and forty one bedrooms, that many people potentially living in that space is an incredibly sustainable way to live as opposed to much more sprawl developments, certainly detached single family homes that are in suburban subdivisions, obviously, but also just the fact that this allows more people to live here, you know, who might not be able to otherwise and maybe commuting from out of town. So both the sustainability aspects from reduced energy footprint of households being in a in a shared building like this and the reduced hardwood footprint from commuting distance and commuting mode share are really substantial. You know, I don't know, look at neighborhoods surrounding it, how many, how much land is is taken to house three hundred and forty one people as opposed to this this parcel? So I know it was touched on in a comment from a member of the public about, you know, solar panels and while I certainly agree that having more solar panels on the on the roof is always a good thing within new development, I I want to make sure we don't overlook the very substantial sustainability sustainability benefits that come from this type of infill. And the second point is just on affordability, which is that similarly, I think, you know, I certainly applaud the deed restricted affordable housing that is a part of this project that was, you know, negotiated and developed in conjunction with with hand and city staff. I think that's really important that we include that where we can through incentives and other things. But of course, the petitioner is a developer making a certain rate of return on investment. That's, of course, how development, the the vast majority of development works, it's market rate development. Which means that those subsidized units, the cost will just be spread over the other units, which is kind of a pro and a con. The other units will all be marginally more expensive because we have the the deed restricted affordable units. That's what happens when we have that, just like inclusionary zoning requirements, the same thing happens. And that's okay. You know, sometimes inclusionary zoning and affordability requirements or incentives like this and provide a deeper level of affordability than can really be achieved by market, market rate units and and can help fill some gaps. But that does come at a cost, which is to potentially raise the cost of of moderate income housing a little bit higher. So I only point that out just to note that I think the notion that the Kmart site proposal not having some of the things that we see in this one is not universally bad, the way people pretend it is. It means that the the units will be marginally lower cost than they would be if we had the deeper affordability built in like we do here. It's a, it's a mix. There's very solid economics research on this from economists who worked in the Obama administration, among others, housing economists. So just again, speaking to housing affordability and sustainability, both, I think we need to keep in mind the kind of the whole system view of both of those things. So I wanted to touch on those. That said, again, I'm excited about a lot of things about this project. I appreciate the updates that have been brought by the petitioner. I think some of them are improvements, including the wrapped garage, for instance, and the reduced parking ratio and some others. So thank you for their work on this. Thank you to staff, and I'll be supporting the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rallo.
President Sims, could I ask a short question of staff? They'd forgotten one.
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon, has the longevity of the structure been determined or was it was it part of the questions put to the put to the developer by staff or or by planning commissioner, anyone?
No, you mean about how about how long we expect the building to be in place?
Yep.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I I have comment. Shall we proceed with comment?
Yes, we're in final comments.
Okay.
Now, so.
Well, that's that's too bad. You know, for something to be sustainable, we need to know how long it's going to last. And so that's something that we need to to really pay attention to and not overlook. I think that well, just following on the the previous comments, I I still think the Kmart site is a lost opportunity for various reasons. I I think that what buildings like this kind of illustrates to me i- is the need for a city architect to review the aesthetics of it. It's it's very difficult to determine in in this review process when so much, there's so many moving parts, exactly what what the final product will be. And I'm afraid we've been disappointed so often that it really requires somebody who has particular skills in them. And then the last thing I would say is that, I mean, I applaud the 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 local traffic study, but I think that so much is happening in this area with the development of the hospital and the development of Kmart site in this as well and others that we really need a regional parking study for this entire area. And I think that that's probably incumbent on us to do it. So I would encourage staff to undertake that sometime soon so that we can evaluate, you know, there's sure to be more development proposals here and we'll need to evaluate those, and that will be an important consideration. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other council member of Holden?
Yeah, just briefly, I would strongly encourage my colleague to consider that maybe it's not just a parking study we need for the area, but a transit study. You know, if the first thing you think of is how are you going to get more cars there, kind of misses the point of our comprehensive and transportation plans. There should be a holistic consideration. But frankly, I'm not sure that you need a study. You simply need to be willing to set prices on street parking, prices on lot parking in the area. If that's, you know, a concern, not that there's a lot of public parking in those areas, but you know, like, if if the knee jerk response is how do we make sure there is more parking here? We're not asking the question or distinguishing between inexpensive inconvenient parking, which are two different things. So food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Do we have any further final comments from council? Okay, I will. First of all, I want to thank staff member Scanlon and her attention to this project and and working with the petitioner. I also do thank the petitioner and his willingness to not only go through the process, but to go through the planning commission and some of the requests that it made. And then to come to council and then to be flexible and willing enough to work with us to me is a collaborative approach that is a win win for not only the petitioner, but this community. There are some questions I heard that should have been considered. I will suggest that a transit study may may work, maybe workable. Don't know if that's Mr. Lou May's area or part of what the his optimization study already entails part of maybe sustainability of a building, how long it could last. I hope I'm not out of place here, but I would suggest that our city council representative on the plan commission offer maybe that tidbit or of information in future projects. And it may already have, but as opposed to just throwing these up in the air and are very good suggestions, I'd like to get them to a place that they can actually do some good with the representatives that are there. Again, thank everyone involved. Do we have any other final comments? If not, are we ready for the question for ordinance twenty one dash thirty one with the addition of reasonable conditions oh one B? For the clerk, please call the world.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty one dash thirty one with the addition of reasonable condition oh one B is adopted nine zero. In my earlier comments, and I was mentioning the work of everyone, I forgot to include the participation and input of our public, and particularly those that live around close to that petition, so didn't want to leave any of those out. Thank you all very, very much. I do believe we have legislation for first reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty one dash thirty four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that ordinance. Oh, I'm so sorry. Before we go there, we moved a second. Will the clerk please call the world?
Yes, Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yeah.
Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. It has been moved and seconded that ordinance twenty one dash thirty four be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty one thirty four to amend title to the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Bloomington Municipal Code two point zero four point four two zero Motion to Adjourn or Recess to Place Greater Limits on the Duration of Council Meetings That They May End at a Reasonable Hour. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is authored by Councilmember Volan and amends section two point zero four point four two zero of the Bloomington Municipal Code, motion to adjourn or recess to provide that any meetings of the common council or its committees shall not continue after five and a half hours from the meeting's call to order or after eleven fifty nine PM local time without unanimous consent of the members present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lucas, can you? At least, there you go. I would like to refer ordinance twenty one dash thirty four to Committee of the Whole on September eighth. I know we'll be discussing potentially a special session. And my drawthers would be that the committee of the whole meeting or committee meeting will begin at six thirty and the special session will begin at seven forty five, if at all possible. I probably got ahead of the gun there, but can you clean it up for me?
I I think that's a, that's within your authority. If you'd like to refer that to the committee of the whole, any member can can make a motion to have that item referred to a different committee, and that would take a majority vote of council, but absent such motion, you're able to refer that to the committee of the whole next week at six thirty.
Okay, well, actually, we got a little bit of the game. And I will refer that to committee of the whole, but then we'll discuss all those details when we get to council matters of council schedule, if that is correct. Before we get there, we will go now to the public for additional public comment, a maximum of twenty five minutes is set aside for this section. I will again remind the public that you can, if you intend to speak, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. You can get there by using the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons on Zoom. Or if you're on a mobile phone, star nine should give you access to publicly speak, or you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Do we have any takers that you can see, Mr. Lucas?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Saying that, we will now go to matters concerning council schedule.
Yes, thank you. Just one, one quick reminder that the council has a work session scheduled this Friday, September the third at noon. That will be on Zoom. And the only item up for possible preview of this Friday is a resolution that I believe a number of members have been working on. And those members may wish to mention that here tonight and request that the council schedule a special session for next Wednesday to consider that resolution. So I'm not sure if those members might want to jump in at this point.
As a member, Rallo?
Yes, I'm I'm one of the cosponsors of the resolution with Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Smith. The resolution addresses certain inadequacies within the police budget. So I'd be happy to discuss that on Friday and but, you know, this would be perhaps an opportune time to 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 schedule that for a special session.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Lucas, I do believe I have the authority as president to call this special session for next Wednesday.
Yes, special sessions can be held on on call of the president or any three members, or certainly by by motion and and a vote of a of a majority of the council. So any of those options are are acceptable. If you'd like to call for a special session at seven forty five, perhaps we could just get confirmation that a majority of council members can can attend.
Okay, thank you. And not only that, the committee meeting will begin at six thirty, and then a special session will begin at seven forty five. I want to make sure that the clerk's office is aware of that, and I do believe she is. And I'd like to know from my colleagues, those that will be available for this next Wednesday. Okay, I see a majority of hands. So, Mr. Lucas, that's the way it will be.
Yes, thank you all. I I have no additional items for for scheduling tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk, do we have any, you have anything that clerk?
Like it'll be a busy Wednesday?
Yes. Okay, I think the council has concluded its business today. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Okay, didn't know anybody wanted a second, but we want to sit here a lot longer. Okay, it's been properly moved a second. Thank you all very much and see the majority of you, I hope, Friday at noon for the council work session. Have a good night and thank you. Thank you all very much and see the majority of y'all hope Friday at noon for the council work session. Have a good night and thank you.
Thanks, Stephen, I got it.
Thanks, good night.
Good night.